Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the planning board for January 2nd, 2020. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. We do have one, a couple, few continuances that we'll take care of first. If I could have a motion, please?
Want a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7E, 7F, 7G, and 7H together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I, oh, all those in favor? I'm opposed, and it's five-zero. Item 7E is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article II definitions and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Escudel Realty LLC. Item 7F is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article V dimensional regulation schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Escudel Realty LLC. Item 7G is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article VII parking structures to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Escudel Realty. And item 7H is a continued public hearing petition to rezone property to the general business district, 123 Ray Avenue. Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of February 6th, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated December 30th, 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Welcome. Have a seat, and please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Russell. This is my husband, Neil Russell. We live at 26 Cormier Road in Burlington, and we are abutters to the property at 108 Muller. So, we had some updates since our last meeting with you folks, so we thought it would be important for us to share those with you.
Thank you, and I think we will have an update for you as well, but you go first.
We just wanted to call attention to the Conservation Commission meeting on December 12th, at which a notice of intent was filed to build on the lot at 108. Key point: We never received any notices here, so this continues a pattern with this whole thing. We got no letter. 30 Cormier did receive a letter 24 hours before the meeting, which, which we obviously feel was unacceptable. It was way too short of a time. No abutters in Woburn received any notice. I believe there's at least one who falls within the 100-foot or 300-foot limit that abuts on the pond directly across from this lot. Don't believe town lines have anything to do with it. At the Conservation Commission, they asked that that be investigated, that the town line should not be taken into account, you know, if notifications were being sent out. The application, obviously, since it was a notice of intent, implied the site plan was already unfilled with the state, which it couldn't have been because of the lawsuit. And it also had an error listing the driveway as 13 feet, which the planning board, I believe, has specified 15. So, again, these are things that happened at the conservation meeting. We're just sharing information as far as that goes. Also, from the Conservation Commission, we're aware of at least one prior wetland violation at this property. I have notes from those, those meetings at the Conservation Commission. I can, I can leave with you. Has to do with paving over an area larger than the plan called for.
And this is a past violation or something that happened recently?
This is a past violation.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, the quick background on that was that the, after we closed off the Cormier side when we built, the neighbors, the two neighbors on the other side on Muller paved and obviously had permits, you know, to, to pave over a certain amount of that right away on the Muller side. But apparently quite a bit of additional asphalt was put down by the 108 property at that time. That was 2012, I believe. Let's see. Also, just to go over some history briefly, there, there are the remnants of a three, I would call it a three-truck garage, are buried in the side of the hill on our property, immediately adjacent or on the 20-foot right-of-way. There's a lot of concrete rebar there. The walls were 12 or 18 inches thick of that garage. Our contractor hammered on it for a while and got permission from the engineering board, I believe, to, to bury the remnants in the side of the hill. But the right-of-way led directly to that garage. So, I don't know, without digging up that hill, how much of that is on the right-of-way or is not of the, of that garage. In terms of our, our position on this, we've stated it before, but we wanted to take the opportunity to just get it on the record, is that we always wanted the access from Muller side. We, we were fully in agreement with that. We still are. We were still hoping something could be worked out on that side. We will fully support anything that, that makes that possible, just, just to put that on, on the record. In reviewing the, the, the meeting minutes of, of this board from February 21st, it wasn't at all clear to us whether an actual formal vote was ever held on the Muller roadside. Obviously, I don't want to go into anything from a legal standpoint or, or anything there, but it appeared that there was discussion about the access, and before any vote was taken, the conversation was turned to the Cormier side.
I think you're correct.
So, it, I think there's a little window opportunity there to potentially at least, however, whatever that might be, to actually hold that vote for whatever good that does. From our standpoint, if that was the approved plan, this leaves an opportunity to close off all the rights-of-way that have been a problem all these years. Once a driveway is created from Cormier Road, we can't go back, essentially. That driveway is going to look like access to Muller Road from Cormier. And sometime in the future, some future owner could, could quite easily pave over a part of that property they were not authorized to do. We're very concerned about that at the appropriate time.
They could not do so legally. I understand your concern now, yes.
Obviously, but they also didn't do it legally before, so. And the, the last point along those lines is that, a- as we've set, stated before, when our property was subdivided to create 30 Cormier in 2005 or 2006, I'm not sure exactly when the vote was taken, the planning board at that time put a condition on the site plan to create a, a right-of-way. And we could argue semantics, but, but it was, a 40-foot right-of-way was added to the site plan before the subdivision was allowed to be granted. If we take that at face value, it seems to me the planning board could require, as a condition of Muller Road access, removal of the rights-of-way to Cormier Road. If, if you can grant a right-of-way as a condition, you could take it away as a condition, it seems to me. I, I'm not saying the planning board can do it. I'm saying it could be a condition on the subdivision plan. So, this would, again, remove all possibility of the two roads ever connecting. It would also remove all possibility of any other building ever being put on that lot, because that 40-foot would be removed. So, just again, our, I wanted to get our position stated at the public meeting, so.
No, I understand. Thank you. Did, did you have anything you wanted to add, ma'am? No? Okay.
But I do have one other thing.
Sure.
In a lot of the planning board meetings, several members, I think probably many members, have indicated that they don't want that 20-foot right-of-way to be used because of the very fact of possibly connecting Cormier with Muller.
Okay. And actually, I was, when I said we had an update for you, I was thinking of a different property, so I, I misspoke. But do we have any other information we can share at this time, Kristin?
I'm hesitant to, I, I mean, we, we've been looking at it. There's a couple of questions that we've posed to council, but they have officially appealed the subdivision decision, so I don't want to get too deep into a conversation in this forum. I appreciate the information coming to us, and I, I, I think that's helpful. But, you know, outside of formal filing, it's hard to discuss too much of it.
Okay.
Right here, but I know things are in discussion with the, the appeal that was filed and kind of matters that are outlined within.
It's also our understanding that 108 is withdrawing their original plan.
Has already.
Has already, withdrawing their original plan and is hoping to refile a new plan.
That has not happened yet, as you would need to withdraw it. The question and mechanics of the how to withdraw is one of the questions with council prior to our next meeting.
Okay. So, is this, are we intending to discuss this at our next meeting? Is it going to be on our agenda?
If the, a subdivision filing will not be on your agenda, because that needs to be properly advertised. If there was a withdrawal, potentially could be, but I won't know until I hear back from council.
All right, thank you.
We, our intention wasn't to go into the legal issues.
I understand.
We just wanted to convey information here.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I, I, this is my summary of these points. I, I think it's better to email it. I don't know.
You can, you can hand it to me.
We'll take a copy, but we would love if you could email it as well.
Yeah, this is just a summary of my remarks, and th- these are the wetlands violations from the Conservation Commission meetings about the driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on a matter not on our agenda? Okay, so no one. We will move on to announcements.
Sure. So, quick announcements. The Sculpture Park Subcommittee, which is a subcommittee of this board, the next meeting will be Tuesday, January 7th, at 7:30 a.m. in the principal's conference room at Burlington High School. We will be having assistant planner interviews on the 7th at 11:00 in the annexed basement meeting room. It's not a public meeting, but just leave you guys there, so put it on your calendars. Christmas tree curbside pickup. It's time to empty those ornaments off the tree. Sadness. The week of January 12th, on your usual trash day. We celebrate the Martin Luther King Junior holiday on, on January 20th, so all town offices will be closed. And then, as you all know, town meeting is happening on Monday, January 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Burlington High School auditorium, so we'll see you all there.
Does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make?
I do. Speaking of town meeting, we have two openings in our town meeting, one in precinct one and one in precinct three. So, if anyone is out there is interested to check with the town clerk on how they get involved.
Thank you, Mike. I also have an announcement. I would like to take a moment to wish a very happy birthday to Otto Cantardi, who you must remember. He was a schoolteacher in Burlington High School for many years and then went on to become vice principal of Burlington High School. He was maintaining law and order when I was there, probably when you were there, too.
He was trying when I was there.
Wonderful man, and he just celebrated his 90th birthday yesterday. So, happy birthday, Mr. Cantardi, from all of us. He was probably there when you were there?
Yes, he was. We were great friends.
Great.
Oh, you too.
Yeah.
All right. We do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we're going to move on to, or administrative matters. We're going to move on to matters of appointment. Our first item is item 7A. Continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article V dimensional regulation schedule to modify the height and dimensional requirements of the high-rise zoning district submitted by the planning board. Gentlemen, if you'd like to present, you're welcome to come forward, and ladies.
Oh, it's in here. Yeah, I'll start quickly. I'm sussing, Liz, where we put the printout, and then I realized we put it in the body of your staff report, so. The articles will be articles 2, 3, 4, and 5, starting with the dimensional regulation. Regulation changes that the, we in the planning board have put forward. Those regulations, changes, just, I know we've gone over this, like, I don't know, I feel like a million times, but in, in this forum, at least three. The main points, it reduces the allowable height from 155 feet to 90 feet, to more closely align with the height and character of the existing commercial development in Burlington. We range somewhere between kind of three and five stories and kind of newer development. There is a provision, the IH district already allows for structured parking. We want to make sure, we're trying to incentivize provisions to put structured parking under buildings. There is a provision that allows for one and/or two levels of structured parking. To add to that, we have, so there's two, within 400 feet, one level is exempt, two, beyond 400, two levels could be exempt. We also have set a sentence to get to the, the green space concept, and we have the equivalent footprint of the parking footprint under the finished floor area of a building shall be set aside as green space unless through a finding by the planning board pursuant to site plan special permit, they determine an alternative public benefit. So, so I think there's some opportunity and definitely a direction that's clearly created by the planning board. This also, by changing some of the more onerous setbacks, as I've demonstrated before, we kind of had these really wide, deep setbacks to really kind of start a lot of sprawl with deep setbacks, not pedestrian-friendly. By adding, by changing the setbacks a little bit, we allow for more flexibility in site design as well as create more walkability and pedestrian-friendly space between buildings. And then we also preserve the residential setback protections that currently exist at 100 feet. So, that's the basics. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. We've spent a long time on this with this forum, as well as zoning bylaw review and land use. And tonight, I really wanted to focus on the rezoning portion, since I feel like I've talked a lot about the dimensional criteria. Again, any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I encourage the proponents to take it away.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, um, so just let me clarify. With this point, we're just going to discuss the actual dimensional requirements, not the individual properties, correct?
Well, we, you can switch to that and then questions, or you can ask questions now, whatever, however you'd like to format it.
I'd like to discuss this one first and then move on to the three properties.
Okay.
I think that would make sense, because this doesn't apply only to those properties. So, did you want to comment on that, or did you want to wait until we discuss the individual properties?
We, we've been to a number of hearings. We think the dimensionals make a lot of sense, provide the flexibility and bring it more in line with the criteria of the IH district. We were very supportive of the reduction in height, because we don't think it's impillability. I think Kristin and some of the prime meetings have approved that, but.
All right. Thank you.
Just for the record, Robert Buckley, Kristen Hung, and Scott Weiss from Gutierrez. It's kind of odd, they were representing all three proposals, but I'll get into that.
Okay, we will. I just think we can probably dispense with this relatively quickly. Brenda, do you have any questions on this first part?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Bernie?
No, I, I think they've, they've been extensively discussed. I know if many of us have attended the other subcommittee meetings, zoning bylaw review and the land use. As a matter of fact, I think, did land use take a vote?
I'm not aware.
Okay, anyways, I, I.
They took a vote. I'm not sure if they had a full quorum. I'm not sure, but they did, they did take a vote. Everyone sitting there was in favor.
But I do think it makes sense to do this, get some parking in the building, get it out, and hopefully get some green space back.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, all right. There is no one on the audience that would like to speak on this matter. I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero? Sorry, five-zero.
Make a motion to recommend favorably on Article II as amended of the January 20.
No, just Article II. No, as amended. Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay. On Article II of the January 2020 town warrant on the petition to amend Article V dimensional requirements of the Burlington zoning bylaw to modify the height and dimensional requirements of the high-rise industrial HI or IH zoning district submitted by the planning board.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, and it's five-zero again. That was.
Good.
Was that to, that was to close or that would be?
Fantastic. Page four.
All right. Okay. Now we can move on to item 7B. Public hearing petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district 3 Vandegrift Drive. American Landmark LLC is the applicant. Let me ask you a question. Because you are representing all three properties, would you like to discuss all three together?
I think we should discuss all three together, Madam Chair.
And vote separately?
Hold separately.
Okay. In which case.
So moved.
Yes.
So moved.
All right, so then let's just, I'll just quickly let you all know. Item 7C is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district 400 to 600 Summit Drive. Gutierrez Company is the applicant. And item 7D is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district 60 Blanchard Road. 60 Blanchard Owner LLC is the applicant.
Did you do B, too?
Yes, I did B first. Oh, well, maybe I didn't. Didn't I?
No, you didn't.
No, no, it's fine. I'm mistaken.
I did.
I did. Thank you. So, thank you, and now please pregame your presentation.
Again, for the record, Robert Buckley, Christine Hung, and Scott Weiss. A, a quick summary here. This, this, the genesis of this came out about a year ago when the town did their first amendment to send a message on its receptivity towards life science. In the marketplace, it was extremely well-received. It was well-received here in town among the business community. We had a number of discussions through the chamber with the government affairs. I think that the general consensus of the government affairs and the, the overall community was that this is a policy decision. It's not a project decision at this point. That Burlington has been always very proactive in anticipating trends and trying to take a leadership role in those trends. What's happened in the marketplace, if you recall, the first meeting, we had Matt Daniels from JL, J- Jones Langless L. come in and give a presentation of the state of what's going on in life science and how attractive it is as an industry and how expensive it is in the greater Boston area and the migration of these industries along the, let's say, the inner belt, the 128, and in some cases, a 495 belt. So, the planning staff through the planning board was very proactive in trying to look at their existing dimensional requirements and trying to address some changes that would be attractive to these industries to hopefully locate here. I don't know if we have a, one of the things that I thought was, what do you have on the?
Do you like the aerial?
The aerial, yes. Sorry. The one that showed, do you have any of Matt's presentation on that?
I can find it.
Oh, that's okay. But it was interesting, when we looked, when Matt Daniels came, it was very interesting that Middlesex Turnpike is a very attractive corridor for life sciences in its present format, but most of it is north of Burlington. And we found through the marketplace that they actually advertised the amenities and the activities in Burlington as a inducement for them to locate elsewhere. So, we said that's really not the way we like to do things around here, so. Working with staff, we tried to identify three sites that we thought might met, met the criteria that Matt outlined and could be rapidly put into a position to hopefully attract this industry. And the most important thing for the industry, for the town, is that it, it stabilizes and diversifies your tax base. You know, we, you know, we're in a 2020 now. What's going to happen with retail? What's going to happen with office? You want to make sure that you have a diversified tax base so that you don't run the risk of, of eroding that tax base if one segment doesn't perform as well as the other. So, we looked at some sites and we identified three potential sites. Some of them have already started to explore life sciences. For instance, 3 Vandegrift, the planning board did issue a, a special permit for life science on the top floor, basically because you need that floor-to-ceiling height. I don't want to get too technical. But we looked at these sites with their prominence and their location and their attractiveness to many different attributes of what the companies are looking for, and these three sites stood out. We do not have projects for any of the sites. As I said in the beginning, this is a policy discussion versus a, a project discussion. But one of the things that Matt Daniels did point out in his presentation, that approximately 83% of those companies that are looking right now to put their stake in the ground and grow and develop want to be up and running within a year's time. So, it's, you know, the coined expression about 10 years ago, shovel-ready. So, through the planning board and, and the modifications, the IH district, the ability to try to use the parking to bring it in and be responsive to what their needs, we feel that if this goes through and these are approved, these would be shovel-ready and ready to go for the marketplace and put Burlington in a premier competitive position vis-à-vis other communities. If you look at what's going on in Woburn and Lorca and Chelmsford and Lowell, you'll see that everyone's trying to drive this type of industry. So, that's it in a nutshell. We certainly would like your recommendation. Again, it's a policy. It's not a project. You're, you're absolutely going to have the ability to comment and dissect and, and put everyone through the wringer with respect to the permitting, but we're trying to hit the market and, and preserve Burlington's preeminent place. And, and you have a history. You did it with, I, Todd isn't here tonight, but, because I'd be fined if I said it, Sun Microsystems. The town was proactive there, and that really changed the character of the town from an industrial enclave to a, a, you know, what did Bob Mercier call it? Where people go to work, if business goes to work, he had that.
Technology.
Technology goes, right. And it became, you know, it changed the whole character of the town with good, solid jobs and preserved the tax base, and everyone knows what that tax base provides. So, I've talked longer than I was supposed to, so if you have any questions, fire away.
Okay. So, I have a question for my board members. Would you like to discuss the properties individually? Perhaps? Okay, let's do that. So, let's go with item B first, Vandegrift Drive.
So, Vandegrift is where you have Samsung Pay. And the building itself lends itself to some repositioning in terms of this, if you look at it, a good portion of it is one-story. What, what people don't notice, and I, I bring your attention to it, in the inner core, there's actually a, almost a half acre.
Courtyard, kind of, yeah.
It, it is, I don't know if you can.
From the other side.
It's, it's.
I'm sorry. Is that a single-tenant building?
No. There are about four tenants in there today.
Who are the other tenants?
I'm sorry, you have Raytheon, you have Samsung. Is it cell phones? I don't know all the tenants, but, but there are, it's a multi-tenanted building.
Is this the first, excuse me, is this the first building on the right as you come in Vandegrift, or this, or not second?
It's the second.
Second. It's the, it's the old Bruce Silverman building, you know, the.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the first one where was, I think you used to have something way back when that said PageNet or something on it? No?
First one was.
Landmark One, right on the corner across from.
This is the red brick building that is with the atrium.
Okay, okay, yeah. I remember being upstairs and Bruce is off, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, the building itself, at the 128 section right here, is four stories in height, but then it drops, most of the building is a one-story building with a phenomenal, if you ever have a chance to go in and see a courtyard in the middle, that is about a half acre, and it's, it's landscaped and rolling, and it really has a nice presence. It's right off of the cafeteria, the dining facilities. And so, it, the beauty of this building is, one, you're near hospital; two, you're near a lot of activity and some amenities; and three, if you were to do something, you have areas, you, you don't want to do it along 128, but you have areas where you could do some parking to add probably about 60 to 100,000 square feet of life science on the second floor. That's just back of an envelope analysis, but if the prominence there is, is what's very attractive. The second.
I just wanted, we just wanted to give them a quick Google view of the.
Oh, the building?
The street, yeah, the street view.
What's the occupancy at the building?
It's rough right now in terms of the rate.
No occupancy?
The, I think it's like 85%. But leases will be rolling in the next few years.
That was my next question. Is one of the leases expiring?
I, I can't. In short term.
Five years.
Yeah, within five years, yeah.
Yeah, that's the view from.
Yeah, that's the view from Vandegrift Drive looking in.
So, it's one story on this side, and then if you look to the back, it goes up to. So, it's one story on this side, and then if you look to the back, it goes up to four stories along the highway?
On the highway.
The highway view, right.
Very different.
So, Brenda, since you started us off, do you have...
Sorry.
No, no, please, don't apologize, please just continue if you have any other questions.
No, I was just trying to see online, see if I could find the other tenants in the facility.
There's the highway, that's the high...
Sofo sign is right there.
The Sofo sign. So, at the highway view, it's four stories, but then it backs down to one story, and it is a massive parking field on the remainder of the site. You'd like to pull the parking in, make it work with the building, and that would be very attractive, because this whole area, being one-story, addresses that issue that we talked about early on, about the floor-to-ceiling and the mechanicals, et cetera, and you could add another story there. So, that's why that building is, is attractive for the rezoning, and it's a landmark building. It would have prominence on the highway, which is something they're very critical of. They desire to have that, that recognition. Little side story, when we did Oracle a number of years ago, the deal almost failed because that sign did not comply with the zoning, and they had to have a variance, if they didn't get that variance, they weren't coming. So, that's, if anyone has any questions about that building.
We'll do, do, does you have any? I don't have any further questions, thank you. Joe?
Mike?
I'm sure Brenda took my questions, so I'm all set.
Ernie?
Um, no, not really.
Okay. All right, I don't have any questions. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question regarding Three Vandegrift Drive? [laughing]
Sherry Ellis, town meeting member, also on the zoning bylaw review committee. Just a question in general for these three rezonings. I know our committee's not really kind of getting into details, but just a question in general. So, this building isn't going to be raised.
Oh, no, no.
So, how, just, how would one put the parking underneath?
No, in this case.
If you want to participate in this, trying to get the higher...
You're not going to knock the building, but you could take a section of it and come up, build it up, put the parking upgrade there.
Okay, all right. So, at grade kind of thing, one level of parking, and then you can get another level there. That was just a general, kind of for all three of them, if they're not going to be raised, how you are going to do that?
No, no, we wouldn't raise, this building is quite spectacular.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is that, all right, how is this really all going to work if you don't want to touch the buildings?
Yeah, and that gives you a nice view of the courtyard that's in the middle.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we want to vote on this one, then?
Sure.
Okay?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To recommend favorably on Article Three, the petition to rezone the property at Three Vandegrift Drive to the high-rise industrial IH district.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I make a motion to close the public hearing, Madam Chair?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero. Make a... Thank you.
Make a motion to recommend favorably on Article Three, the petition to rezone the property at Three Vandegrift Drive to the high-rise industrial IH district.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero. Okay. And we will move on to discuss 400 to 600 Summit Drive, the Gutierrez Company.
Oh, you're going to that one next.
I will just make an introductory statement on that. I think that is the, probably, the premier location in town for a, obviously, you already have something there, but you, in terms of recognition and a defining potential for the, for this industry in Burlington, it's, it is the point of the triangle, so to speak. You see it coming Route Three, you have 128 visibility, you have areas where it could be developed. I'll turn it over to Scott on that, but to me, it's, from my standpoint, trying to attract businesses, that's the, that's the gem.
Sure, and if you go back to the JLL, well, let me step back again, Scott Weiss, from the Gutierrez Company, and let me just say, we're excited to be part of this discussion, because we do think with Millipore Sigma located at the summit and three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, if you go back to the JLL presentation about life science locations and where they're concentrated, this is a huge dot, this one site on the map, in terms of potential life science, and it actually is an attractor in of itself, because they do a lot of serving the life science community, so they provide products and services and components to the life science community. So, they help bring in companies to this area that may not otherwise have been looking or knowing about Burlington overall, so that is a big attractive piece of this as well. So, the site obviously includes three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, which, if you remember way back, was originally two buildings that was combined to one. It was built in phases before we finished the initial phase. Millipore asked for construction to begin on the second phase, so the entire three hundred and fifty thousand square feet has now been built. It is essentially, it's nearly fully occupied. They have some bit of office area that's not occupied right now. And we've done traffic counts, which have been submitted to the department, that shows the traffic is, is half, I forget the exact number, half, sixty percent at most, of what the office projections would be on that site, so you have much lower traffic and you have, you have a higher level of development or of infrastructure in the building that gets tax revenues or higher for such a facility typically. So, so that's a great thing. And on this site, Millipore had come to us in the past and asked us about a potential expansion in the, in the past for an acquisition they were looking at, and we could not do that at that time. This site really does lend itself, and I'm sure there will be future interest to, to expand and grow life science activity on the site. And so, to be part of this opportunity where we could find ways to accommodate that would be, you know, helpful to both them, the location, and grow the tax base in town as well.
Kristen, would you like to add anything before I turn it over to the board?
Um, just overall, I think, and they brought up the presentation by JLL when they came in, but if you look, just, just look to go back a little, I know we voted on one already, but if you look at the rezonings and you look at kind of where they're positioned, and we're looking to really put Burlington on the map, we started this a year ago, to get the zoning in place, get the designation for Mass Bio, but aside from that, you want to create space, and you don't want to create space, incubator space is fantastic, and we should probably think about that in like A and B Street and Cypress Drive and all those places, but when you really want to make a statement, and, you know, Millipore started with making a statement at Route Three and 128, and you look at 60 Blanchard Road, and 60 Blanchard Road is, you know, is right between Oracle and, you know, and on Vandegrift, and anyway, it's just, it's ripe for the next it thing, and I think Three Vandegrift is the same, but in with, Millipore, Millipore, as mentioned, is the star on the map for Burlington right now. And we looked at the IH dimensions, took a look at it, we've talked a lot about, and actually, it's on here, the setbacks of height that is, that are on the aerial that are in front of you. So, you know, we, when we look at it, just in our perspective, right now, they could build the same, I mean, they could increase density, they could increase space, increase density under their existing zoning district and IG. The part, the parcel itself was combined after our, so the parcel with the summit is all one parcel, 200 is separate. They could build the square footage now, however, we feel that there is more flexibility for a better sense of development with the protections from the residential zone that exist. So, I guess, we've heard some questions, oh, well, they can build more, well, they can't build more, they can build just the same amount on, on the existing district, it's kind of, kind of crammed in there, but they could do it.
If they build life science. If they build life science.
Well, they have life science, right? If they build, if they continue to build life science in the...
Why was it they had to tell Millipore that they couldn't accommodate their request previously?
Um, well, so they could build some more, however, parking does get in, parking gets a little bit.
The parking is... It could be built, but we could not replicate the parking, it would displace parking.
So...
So, it's the parking structure that makes the difference for you?
At this point, yeah.
Yes, and as we looked at before, originally, with the retaining wall on the, is this north, so on the south side, is this north?
Which retaining wall? Oh, this one.
The south side.
The south side, I'm just trying to figure out what the, how they're oriented. On the south side, retaining wall, it's a huge retaining wall, and if we could have accommodated some sort of structure parking, then the original design, we think it just would have made a more walkable site, but, anyway, I, I don't have too many comments other than, you know, professionally, I think we support the locate, we looked at the locations, we support the locations in terms of really just putting life science on the map in Burlington, so. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, do you have any questions specifically about this site?
Yes, thank you. How much more can be built? Did you take a look at that?
It's roughly maybe two hundred and fifty thousand square feet to three hundred thousand square feet, and that's mathematically, you could do that, and it'd be difficult to fit because of the, because of the height setbacks, it's probably difficult to really achieve that type of density.
Did your traffic study take that growth into account when you did your, when you put that study together?
So, as part of...
Or was it, as it existing as it stands today?
As part of the approvals for, for the project that's built and occupied, we had some monitoring requirements to go out and count traffic, so the numbers I gave you were as compared to what was permitted. If you built this two hundred and fifty, even three hundred thousand square feet of additional development, you would still be lower in terms of total traffic than that original projection.
If it's all life science?
Pardon me?
If it's all life science.
I think even if it wasn't, but I, we can confirm that, but...
But you would do, I mean, you would do the detailed overview of that during any site plan.
If a, if a need comes forward, it would, first of all, it would have to be life science under the guidelines here to get the density bonus, if you will. So, it would, it would need to be life science, but even if it wasn't, we usually do our traffic studies more conservatively to assume worst-case scenario, and as this site shows, it's, the traffic that's generated from a lab, life science facility, is much less than a straight office building. Typically, it's different work hours, it's the fact that you have large lab areas with very few people in it, or you have lab areas with very few people in it who also have a desk elsewhere in the building, so, so it's just lower density in terms of numbers of people.
And you had mentioned that there is, it's a multi-tenant facility. You had mentioned it was pretty full?
No, this is Millipore Sigma, it's one tenant, single tenant, and it is, it is like ninety-seven, eight percent full.
Got it. That was my next question, is what their occupancy is. And lastly, lease term is?
Twenty years.
Twenty years from today?
Twenty years.
Twenty, twenty forty?
Started twenty, when it started, was it fifteen or twenty? It's a long time, it's probably, it's at least another, you know, thirteen years, if, but it may be another seventeen years, I gotta check the, you know, their lease started a couple of years ago when the building was completed.
Okay.
How much investment did they put into the building?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's a long-term lease, and they've got a lot of equipment there.
I understand, okay. That's all I have, thank you. Thank you.
So, I forget exact, what is the exact amount of square footage in there?
So, with that building right now, there's three hundred and fifty thousand square feet, with 200 Summit, which is the existing office building in front, is another two fifty, so that's six hundred thousand square feet on the site today.
You're talking about potentially another...
Two fifty, maybe?
Fifty percent of what's there, another, close to fifty, is that forty, forty something percent? How will that affect green space on the lot, you know, if you, if you were to do it?
Yeah, well, we would have to keep green space, we'd have to preserve a fair amount of green space.
Would you increase any green space, I guess, I would say?
By building something new, probably not increase overall green space, but that's something we could, we could look at at least maintaining and not reducing.
Right. So, I didn't know if there would be a net increase in green space, or there wouldn't be, you know, given the fact that you re, you know, the structured parking and then you're going to build, but, so you'd be basically building everywhere where there's currently parking, and, and so you're trying to zero out the green space.
Right, we'd have to move, yeah, move some pieces around in order to do that a little bit.
So, do you have, and I know you guys made a statement at the beginning, there's no current plan, or anybody right now in mind for that?
Right, right, there, there isn't, because there are so many different variations on what the need could be from, from straight lab, multi-story lab, single-story lab space, which is prototype, or, or testing, or even, you might call it manufacturing lab space, but I tend not to, I don't think that's really the appropriate word, it's, it's lab space, but they're actually making some medicine in that, in that space, but it's such a small batch that it's, you know, in a small box kind of container.
So, your projections would be, if you did build out, you still think you're going to be lower in traffic count than you originally had planned for the site as it sits right now?
Yes, even with some additional, even with the additional space, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott, has Millipore ever reached out to you guys at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent occupancy about getting more space?
Yeah, so, again, they were in the process of, I don't have all the details, but about a year, more than a year ago now, they reached out to us, they were acquiring a company in California, they were thinking about locating it nearby, and to them, they liked the idea of having it on-site and inquired to us about that. And at that time, you know, this was actually before the town modified the zoning even a year ago, which, which provided for the lab life science bonus, at that time, following that, maybe there would have been some way to accommodate, but at that time, there was really no way to accommodate it and meet their schedule.
So, potentially, they could be a tenant if this goes through?
Yeah, I, our vision is certainly, we can't make them expand or something, but we know that they, they, they are a growing company, they make acquisitions, they, Millipore acquired Sigma during the initial construction of the project, triggered the expansion almost immediately, they acquired this California company, they, they're in the process of growing, so, so there's activity. We do see this as a life science campus, and we think that that's, you know, a great opportunity for being a really, you know, a big dot, and maybe a bigger dot in the future on, on the life science.
Thank you, Scott. Nothing further, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Ernie?
Um, can you, can you guess, I guess is the word, where you might locate another building?
So, it, it's really hard, you see the little dashed white lines on the, which one was the?
This one.
That one, thank you. All right, so there are white lines on here that are buffers, each one is a hundred feet, so it's a big scale. You can't get a building to be built anywhere, you know, closer to, there's adjacent residential areas that are off the map, because they have a pretty big, deep lots with trees and everything, and then, so that would be maintained. We could put a building up close in here, maybe down here, which, again, this is up on a hill.
Right.
Millipore's building here sits here on a hill, it's hard to see, shaded underneath, that's the existing 200 Summit building, which is lower than this building. This is six stories, this is five stories because of the life science lab stuff that... Millipore's building here, sits here on a hill, it's hard to see shaded underneath, that's the existing 200 Summit building, which is lower than this building, this is six stories, this is five stories because of the life science lab stuff that has the taller floors, and in five stories is actually taller, not taller, it sits higher up than the building in front of it.
From the ground.
Because it's, it sits a little bit lower. Up front here, as you get towards the highway off the map here, this is more down in a hole as you sit down here, so there's potential maybe down in this area and here, maybe, you know, displacing parking back here, there's a couple of different, maybe a further extension of the building at the end there, so there's several different options and locations where depending on the type of space, is it lab, is it compatible with the lab, is it Millipore Sigma, is it a different complementary company, you know, so there, there's a lot of different options in terms of how it, how it could materialize, but the idea would be to keep it and have it in a campus-type fashion.
Okay, so do you envision, if this passes that town meeting, going to, going to Millipore and saying, hey, guys, we can do something now if you want, is that, I mean, you're going to sell it, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, ask them, and then it's been our company's approach, and as you guys have seen a lot of me, to try to develop something in advance of knowing who it is, and come to you and lay it out, work out the details, so then we can go to the market and go to Millipore and say, here's, here's an option. And very often, we've ended up coming back to you, it happened here when Millipore came along, we come back to you and say, we've worked out the details in the past of the impacts and how it would work and everything, but now we want to put the two buildings together, or we want to move the pieces around, but knowing that you have the ability to build or deliver something is important, and obviously, this would be a first step for this site.
And just one other what-if question that's been kind of hanging around in the back of my mind on all, basically, all these street parcels is, once it's developed and built out for life science, it's life science, I mean, you cannot, there's no way to turn it back to office because you'd have to reduce the size of the building, I don't know what you could do, right? Is that correct, or am I?
You'd have to utilize the space, what is it, 15% at all times, it'd have to be dedicated to the life science.
Would have to stay dedicated to life.
Well, you know, Ernie, to that point, I was sitting here trying to rack my brain, this is the future. What was the last office building that was built in Burlington?
I, good question.
The only thing I could think of is the wraparound at the District, the 700, you know, the extension there.
The extent, expansion there.
But that, just recently, has been leased, but you have a big supply of existing space in Burlington office space that is not capable of being repositioned to accommodate life science, so you have a supply of office.
Already.
Right, so what you're trying to do is grab the, the cachet of where the industry's going, there's really been no office buildings built in this area, the last office building I did was in Marlboro for a special use, and that was a retrofit.
What about the bike shop on Cambridge Street?
Sorry?
Cambridge Street, Cambridge Street.
The bike shop?
Well.
That's a small.
I'm talking major.
Major.
So.
Yeah, and, and actually, to that point, somebody mentioned the other day, and that East Cambridge is in danger of flooding if climate continues as it is, and again, we're, we're.
I haven't heard that one before.
You haven't heard that one?
The summit site is much.
Right, that's, that's where, that's actually the whole Burlington.
That's where he's bought, we're ready.
Using that in our marketing materials.
A summit site, okay, parts of Burlington, you don't want to talk about that.
Yeah, well, actually, most of Burlington is, is well above sea level, it's not flooding because of that.
My houses.
You put that in your brochure and credentialed.
But, you know, as you, and as you know, the, the cost of real estate, for instance, Kendall Square, Somerville, in terms of square footage, what they're charging for life science now, is it sustainable?
All depends if the price of medicine keeps going up, I guess.
Well, I will also throw out, I know you were talking about with three Vandegrift, the type of opportunity that you have there and the type of building, and Blanchard Road will provide a different opportunity. This is, this is a bigger opportunity, most likely, for the bigger tenant that we already have in town.
Right.
At 97%, I would think that that's where we're going. Just to correct the occupancy.
But just quickly, one of the issues that we brought forward a while back and goes into this, Burlington has a ton of office space, and that's fantastic, but we have a ton of office space, we do not have a ton of space that's able to be accommodated for a life science user, so that's why, that's why we're here, you know, so I think it's the office question.
And that goes with the diversity of the tax base, but it also allows the town to do one other thing, which I didn't really get too far into, but the town's been very proactive on housing, the town has been very proactive on other zoning initiatives, it puts the town in a very, very good position with respect to funding for infrastructure improvements, et cetera, from the state.
From the state.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I don't really have questions about the rezoning, I have a lot of questions about how you're going to do this on your site, and I know that's a different discussion you'll be coming to us, I was happy to hear you say that this is something that you would probably try to get permitted before you actually have a tenant in place, because I think it's important that we work really closely from the beginning, I wouldn't want to see you go too far down the road designing something and then bring it to us and us say, oh, we don't like that, you know, we don't want you to spend a whole lot of money doing that, let's try to work very closely on this, because I think it's tricky, it is tight, you're talking about a large building on a site that doesn't have a whole lot of space, so let's be sure we work really carefully and closely together on this so that we can accommodate your needs and still get what we're looking for, in terms of green space and something that's not offensive to the neighbors.
Yeah, there's, many of them are, this isn't the only one, it's a complicated puzzle, and there's a lot of pieces on this one, and we understand that.
Yes, so that's my only comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to, okay, all right, then I think I am ready.
I'm trying to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, five zero.
And I'll make a motion to recommend favorably on Article Four, the petition to rezone the property at 400-600 Summit Drive to the high-rise industrial IH District.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, five zero. Okay, we are cooking with gas tonight, as my dad would say. Next, we will discuss the property at 60 Blanchard Road.
Madam Chair, this is probably the prime example of how this initiative could be for a piece of property that I think is severely underutilized, even though I know the planning board has approved a site plan, a special permit for an office building, I believe, without a user, but what happened?
A quick, this is the old Datacon building, correct?
Old Datacon, yeah, Datacon. What do you do with a bike?
I burnt it out.
So 60 Blanchard Road is a one-story building that is probably, dates back to the 70s or 60s, 50,000 square feet, one story, the parking, even under the approved plan, in order to satisfy the onsite parking, you actually come down the road, which on either side are wetlands, so if you had a situation where you say you have an underutilized building, you have a changing industry, that is not an attractive office building, even if you did an office building, I would venture to say, because I, when we looked at space in town, our criteria was, we want convenient parking so that we can go from garage to the building, I can't imagine, okay, there we go, that's, you know, we have a situation where you could conceivably have people walking that, that parking, that aisle to get to the building, makes no sense, I mean, it's an ideal building to put, first of all, when you drive by, you never see it because it sits below 128, so this was the ideal building to do something to put, put it on a podium, that, this building probably would be torn down, whoever asked that question, but again, it's, it's, it's frontage on 128, which is highly valuable, it would result in a significant increase in value, and again, it's, it's, it's that clustering effect of, you know, there we, there we go, of putting these industries together and enhancing the synergy of the values, so, I don't know what else I could say about that building.
I think you said it. Okay, any questions about this building?
No, no, this one seems like a no-brainer for me.
What about the statue, is that?
Oh, I'm not touched. That has come up on many discussions.
What is it?
It's a Madonna statue, isn't it?
Is it really?
Yeah, it's a Mary on that.
Oh, I didn't know that. You'll have to be very careful when you.
My vote is contingent on that stain.
Do you have any other questions besides about the statue?
Is there someone in there now? Is it occupied now that?
Datacon still is in there, but they, they were under a lease.
Nothing further, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ernie?
Um, no, not really.
Okay, is there any, no, nobody in the audience, I do not have any questions. Madam Chair, I'd like to make, make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Madam Chair would also like to make a motion to recommend favorably on Article Five, the petition to rezone the property at 60 Blanchard Road to the high-rise industrial IH District.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to your staff, thank you to the ZPR team.
Yes, there you go, you got the acronym.
All the initials down, we've had some very long and proactive and interesting discussions on this, so I think this is going to, this will be good for the town in the long term.
Thank you all very much, and Happy New Year to all of you.
I'll be.
Can I make one more statement that I forgot to make earlier? Just on, I know the Board of Health has been very involved in this, and I just want to thank the Board of Health, they've been working with council to get their update to their RDNA to include all biological agents and life science, and they are in their final drafts, and they hope to vote that, they hope to vote that on their meeting of January 14th, so I want to thank the chairman, Dr. Weiner, and the Board of Health staff.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks, Scott.
We have an item for discussion, we wanted to have a brief discussion about General Walker Estates, there has been a lot of, a lot of meetings and discussions and some, hopefully, some progress made, I'm going to ask Kristin to give us an update.
Sure, so tonight, what's in front of you, and it's, it's really a very brief question, so General Walker Estates, we're all, end of Dartmouth Road, we have, a minor engineering change to the subdivision has been submitted to kind of look to remedy what issues that had been come up with three and five Dartmouth. We, along with council, believe that it might be wise to have a peer review, considering the drainage system, that is on those two lots that deals with the street drainage, to take a look at if the issues that we had identified after we had signed the CO and the construction of the system itself were, are installed appropriately, and if the minor engineering change, proposed changes, that pretty much just say, can we do what we've done already, are in place, so what we're asking for with this is for you guys to vote to instruct us to start that process, to put the scope together and start getting verbal bids, just solicit bids for, to do this peer review work, they do, they will open at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I think we should, we can probably dispense with this pretty quickly, there's, in my opinion, this is something we absolutely have to do, work was done on the site after this was, after approvals were granted, and we don't really know what's out there right now, and whether or not the system is working, so I would ask the board to support this. Anyone have any questions?
I agree.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the planning staff to begin the process of creating a scope and soliciting bids for a peer review of the minor engineering change to the General Walker Estates definitive subdivision, opening at the meeting of January 16, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, good. Awesome.